I call the April 20, 2021 Regular Medium Council to order. Councilperson Blake will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
[Inaudible].
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 Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Marne?
Here.
Good evening. As of the beginning of April, council as well as Municipal Planning Commission and Board of Building and Zoning Appeals are back to welcoming the public to their meetings. Council chambers has a reduced total occupancy of 41 with social distance seating. Masks are required for the audience and those and for those walking around the room. If you wish to speak about a particular item on the agenda, you will need to complete and submit the form available at the council chambers entrance tables to the clerk of council prior to the start of the meeting. You will be directed to the podium at the appropriate time. For the time being, we are still offering attendance via WebEx. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q&amp;A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in the meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments on related to the agenda items will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. For those who are attending remotely, please make your speaking request at this time and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the April 6, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Minutes of the April 6, 2021 regular meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-026.
An ordinance repealing current chapter 1351 flood hazard regulations of Part 13, Title V of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor, 2006, as amended and reenacting, amending, revising, and enacting for codification purposes, new chapter 1351 flood hazard regulations, sections 135101 through 135199 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Now, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, is revising flood insurance rate maps along the Great Lakes coastlines. Changes will more closely mimic the activity along ocean fronts by including storm surge -- excuse me -- and wave heights generally three feet or greater when determining flood elevations and special flood hazard areas along the shoreline of Lake Erie. The current regulatory flood plain elevation on Lake Erie is a high water, still water elevation of 576. The new regulatory flood plain will be higher, two to six feet on average, and more landward than the current flood plain elevation, and will vary along the coast due to differing shore conditions. This new flood zone designation along Mentor's coast is known as Zone VE. Due to the change in these maps and some updated language required by FEMA throughout the flood hazard code, the entire chapter 1351 is to be removed and replaced with a new chapter. The model language of this regulation was provided by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Water, where it was formulated to comply with the National Flood Insurance Program, FEMA rules, and Ohio law. The updated model language is being used by all Lake County coastal communities. The revised FEMA flood maps, the flood insurance study will go into effect May 4. Thank you.
Council, I also received a letter from FEMA, and this regulation, as Mr. Swiger just explained, involves changes in the coastal shoreline. But if we did not adopt these revisions, it would affect any residents throughout the city would no longer be able to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So with this approval, they will continue to be involved in that program should they wish to be. What is your pleasure, council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-026 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-27.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Members of council, this does two main things. It increases our appropriations for primarily the new 2021 NOPEC grant that was received. So there's a $112,236 increase in appropriations to that fund and an applicable same amount increase when we return the advance upon being paid for the energy improvement projects. There's also a couple residual NOPEC amounts from prior years that are being re-appropriated so we can spend that money. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-027 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-028.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a labor agreement on behalf of the City of Mentor with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the last agreement in our safety department, leaving only the public works and recreation workers covered under that singular agreement remaining. Mr. Zanpedro.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Council, this agreement is actually very simple. It mirrors the other two police agreements we entered into in terms of the three-year wage increase at two and a half per year for all three years, retro for those employees who continue to be employed and in the unit. And one other minor modification, which was their performance incentive program, which is essentially curtailed use of sick leave, and how that was calculated, we modified it by an hour per each category.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one question.
Mr. Donovan.
On the incentive program, what's the next level down? I see this one is 400. The next level down, do you know that number? It says -- my question is, do you have incentive number for the next level down in the category of this change you're making? Do you know if it's like $200 or $300? Because this one's $400, the incentive.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, councilman. The numbers did not change. The columns remain the same.
Oh, okay.
So it would be similar to what we had in the last contract. There's no more dollars going to the amounts, but it was basically the way it read previously was if you used under eight hours.
Gotcha.
That was the next segment. So a person who had one sick leave day automatically got knocked out of that segment.
Okay.
And into the third because their days are eight-hour days. So we made that adjustment to allow for if you took a day of sick leave, you remained in that second category and so on.
Nice. Thank you. Councilman, to answer your question, $300. Okay. So two days or less would be $300. Then down to $50 was in the final category.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
And Mr. Zanpedro, you and your staff and all the parties involved, congratulations on coming to a fair agreement.
Thank you, councilman.
You guys are all working well, then everyone's working well for the City of Mentor.
We still have one more to get.
Ordinance number --
And yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-028 has been approved. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. Council, we do have one open cut pavement request. It is at 9214 Hedlund Road. It's for the purpose of a six-inch sanitary sewer connection, an eight-by-eight open cut for residents artists incorporated. Ask for your concurrence.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Lake County Computer and Electronics Collection is this Saturday, April 24, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lake County Fairgrounds on Mentor Avenue. The City of Mentor continues to support the Health District with COVID vaccine distribution and administration. This week, Mentor City workers are scheduled to assist with three point-of-distribution centers, what we call pods. The first is a mega pod on Wednesday at Lakeland Community College. The second will be at the Mentor Public Works Maintenance Facility on Friday, and the third is a second dose mega pod to be held at Mentor High School on Saturday. All pods are from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And I think it's worth pointing out, and I think we're going to do our best to try to find more ways to alert the public to the fact that surprisingly, our Health District is finding that they have more vaccine than what they have signups. So both with respect to this Wednesday's pod, I would encourage you to contact, if you're a member of the public, that wants to be vaccinated above the age of 18, and you are interested, you can reach out to them, and they will provide -- they should be able to accommodate you, if not now, certainly in the coming weeks. So we've reached a point where we're happy that we have more vaccine than we have people raising their hands for it, but we want to see it get out. Last week, the Lake County Health District Commissioner, Ron Graham, reported that Lake County is about at 37% vaccinated. State of Ohio is at 35%. Lake County is second in the state among small counties, first in the state in large counties, and third overall and across the state in its vaccination rate. So we are doing fantastically. The Health District is still receiving about 3,000 doses every week, and I know that, Mrs. Dowling, you had asked about the senior center, and we continue in the hopes that we'll be able to open that soon. We got an update just this morning about the vaccination rate among our seniors in Lake County, and that is well above 60, between 60 and 80%, depending on which age category you're looking at. So overall, probably about 70% of our seniors have been vaccinated, which is outstanding. So taking into consideration those who are not of age to be vaccinated, we're almost hitting 50% in this -- in the county for those eligible. So it's a pretty good number, and we hope to keep that up. The 2021 road repair program for asphalt streets milling will be complete this week, the milling part of it. Full-depth pavement repair work on milled streets will also begin this week. Stockbridge Dartmoor stormwater improvement, the work that has been happening on Mentor Avenue, is nearly complete, and pavement restoration has started. The asphalt paving on Mentor Avenue is expected to take place this Friday or possibly into early next week, depending on weather. The traffic zone on Mentor Avenue will be removed upon completion of the paving, and then storm sewer installation on Dartmoor is expected to occur next week. Progress has been slowed because of the difficulty always in dealing with excavation and installation on Mentor Avenue. The original completion date of May 28 may have to be revised, but not too long, so that project is moving along, right, Mr. Swiger?
Yes, it is.
That's all. Ken, on your vaccine report, you know, we continue to hear the vaccines going up and vaccines available and cases reports, but I don't hear deaths. And in Lake County, I think that's somewhat ground to a halt, isn't it, which is the real bottom line relative to tragedy? There's an economic side to it, but...
Yeah, well, I think it's fair to say overall that, you know, we've seen much better days. Their cases have gone up in just this last week compared to the prior weeks where we were leveled out around, probably around 150 cases or so a week countywide, which is a very small number compared to where the numbers we were hitting in the thousands back in the -- toward the end of last year. Hospitalizations are way down. Deaths are still happening, though. So we do see, you know, I think last week was the first week we didn't have one for a while. Prior to that, it's maybe two or three. You know, we simply get the data. We don't know how close the connection that is and what underlying conditions there are. The age for deaths in Lake County has hovered around the age of 80 on average pretty much since the start of the pandemic. So, but there is very good news. I mean, the numbers are down, and they haven't stopped, and so we tell people, remain vigilant until you get your vaccine and, you know, follow the health rules. But, you know, we're optimistic about the future, for sure.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Mr. Kirchner?
It might be worth mentioning one more time, the procedure folks should go if they want to get that vaccine for an 18-year-old or older.
Sure. So you can reach out to the County Health District. You can get on their website and register. You can also download the application, Armivax, and do that through your phone, and that will connect up to not just the Health District, then any private provider within this area, and you can put in, I believe you can put in the radius area in which you want to seek out a vaccine, and they will send you, they will set up an appointment through that app on where to go.
Those dates are pretty coming up in the short term?
Yeah. Chief, you can do a better job of this than I can, for sure.
The manager's report was very accurate in the same information we're getting at the Fire Department. There is a pod tomorrow at Lakeland Community College. It was scheduled a little later, but it'll probably run eight to four just because they feel that the efficiency of the pod, they'll get everybody through. Friday has repeat second doses, and so is Saturday at the high school, but the Health Department will continue vaccination clinics as the demand calls for it.
And there are open, as of this morning, there were quite a few opening appointments still available.
For Wednesday, that's correct.
Wednesday.
Yeah. There's quite a few appointments open.
Thank you.
And again, that pod, that mega pod at Lakeland is scheduled for every Wednesday for as long as vaccine remains available, which it's still coming pretty readily.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I guess I'll mention, have you guys heard anything about that they need help at the Mentor High School and these other volunteer volunteers they need? And I think you have to be vaccinated. I think they're short of people. And have you heard anything about that? I know the county shot out a shout-out to the county workers if they could volunteer Saturday at Mentor High.
So the coordinating group, of which Mentor is a big part of that, has worked together on all of these large pods. So any, whether it's here in Mentor or at the high school or at Lakeland, you'll see employees from jurisdictions across the county. Our city employees, many of them will be working tomorrow and have in the past. You'll see county workers there, workers from all municipalities, and including some private sources through hospitals and other healthcare organizations within the area. I said this, I think, the last time I offered up a report, you know, we're doing this all with local people. We're proud of that. We don't have any federal assistance coming our way, and we haven't needed it. And the report that I offered you a few minutes ago shows that, you know, those efforts have paid off. We're top of the state for any county of any size, above 200,000. So, you know, the cooperation, it's being led, you know, primarily through our Fire Chiefs Association and the Fire Department in close connection with the Health District and the County EMA under Joe Buscher's watch, former city chief, fire deputy fire chief. So, you know, I think it goes to show that, you know, the work that we do all year long, every year, and the cooperation and coordination that we have on all things that we do to help solve some of the county and our individual communities' needs pays off when you have to provide this sort of larger-scale stuff. So right now, I think it's covered before we go out and solicit private asking for help. But if that day comes, we'll certainly reach out to the community at large.
Thank you. We're fortunate. Thanks.
Clerk's correspondence. Julie?
Council is in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court month-end report for March of 2021, and that is all.
Commission committee reports. Meeting minutes. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, March 9, 2021. Municipal Planning Commission, March 25, 2021. Old business. Hearing none. New business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marne?
As you know, at our work session, we're discussing garbage recycling, things of that nature. We have a contract coming up for the first time in 10 years. Well, the representatives from Waste Management told me that there was a Waste Management app, and I said, oh, I'd sign up for that online. He says, oh, no, the app takes it one step further. Not only can you do everything online, but also tell you when your garbage or recycling is picked up and when it's going to be picked up and things of that nature. So it keeps you in the loop in case you're running around or the wind's blowing in there, what have you. So I just downloaded it, and I was pretty impressed.
I encourage everyone to download the app. That's all I got.
That's a good action item for all of us to download. Okay. Persons before council, there are none.
Mr. President, there's no other new business. I would make a motion to adjourn the executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22, Parts G1, to consider the compensation of public employees and officials.
Julie, please call the roll.
You're going to need a second.
Thank you, Scott.
Excuse me.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes. So...
So.
Mr. President, I move that we go back into regular session.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Should no other business, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.